Okay, it is nine o'clock, Monday, July 9th, 2018. And I call the public county commissioner's court to order. Today we have James Shelburne from Anish Three Church in class two with the certification. If you still have your number one stand.
We're not here to do that. centuries ago, Lord, you taught our people to pray for more people like our county's leaders, for those in high places. You instructed us to give honor to whom honor is due. You shall not speak evil of a leader of your people is the clear instruction of your holy word. Grant, dear Lord, that all of us gathered here today will resolve to treat our elected leaders with the deference you have commanded. May our words be respectful, our hearts kind, our judgments fair, as we address those who have chosen to lead us. Bless our commissioners, Lord, and our county judge, especially during those days when leading us is not fun. May your spirit calm their thoughts and tame their tongues when their motives are questioned or their judgment is impugned. By your grace, Lord, make this an hour none of us will later be ashamed of. In the name of your son who teaches us to treat others as we want to be treated. Amen.
(inaudible) specifically cry on the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no degree of justice. (inaudible) the Texas way, I would bless the agents to be Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Shelburne, that was the best prayer I've heard in a long time. Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, number one on the agenda is recognition of minutes, to recognize the minutes of the June 25, 2018, Florida County Commissioner's Court meeting, and the June 27, 2018, special Commissioner's Court meeting. (inaudible) so recognize, thank you, number two vouchers, to consider enacting on the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county attorney office for the period of June 20, 2018, through July 2nd, 2018. Check numbers 1-8-1-0-9-8 through 1-8-1-2-8-0, and line transfer 1-0-9-6 through 1-0-9-7, and amount of five hundred ninety-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
(inaudible) the checks and (inaudible).
Second, I have a motion (inaudible) labor ratio right here, five to zero, (inaudible). Insurance report, recognize that, Kay, on you here.
I'm on, sorry. Not being unusual.
Okay, all right, so recognize, thank you, Kay. Number four, court supervised release program, you hear presentation, that Taylor County Court Supervised Release Program, and discuss the potential benefits of creating a similar program in Potter County. They ran mine pool, and Terry Easterling (inaudible) and Judge Ward is (inaudible). Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Mike Walther, Director of Adult Probation for Taylor, Calhoun, and Coleman Counties. I can't help but notice my criteria didn't come up here.
He did not.[238.12][238.12](laughter)
I wouldn't get a word in it.[241.12][241.12](laughter) We've been doing this a long time. I hope I don't make my (inaudible) shame when I do this presentation, but that was quite a prayer, thank you. CSRP Court Supervised Release Program has been in operation in Taylor County for some eighteen years. It was the brainchild of then-judge County Lee Hamilton, who is now a district judge of the Hundred Forty District Court. The original purpose of CSRP was, if many of you remember some years ago, every county was faced with jail overcrowding, and Judge Hamilton thought CSRP would be a very good way to help control jail overcrowding. He tapped into the CSCD at the time because we had the infrastructure in place, the relationship with the judiciary, and the ability to go forward and supervise people released on bonds and the conditions that the judges would order on bond. We operate with a county-paid staff of three, and I have brought some additional numbers that have been updated, Judge, if I can find them and give them to you, that's okay.
Sure.
I think the original year (inaudible) we gave you the last two years, but as I will be doing this presentation next week to the Taylor County Commissioner's Court, when I ask them for funding again, we went ahead and updated to give you an idea of what the previous twelve months looked like. Now, in Taylor County, we do our jail expense at forty-eight dollars per day. I don't know what y'all do your jail expense in Potter County Act. Terry said he thought it was a little more than that. As you can tell, the number of days has increased steadily over the last three years. This particular last twelve-month period accounted for some eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two jail days, times that forty-eight dollars in Taylor County is a savings of eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, two hundred and six, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand and two hundred and sixteen dollars. This is a significant amount of money and cost savings to the county. Taylor County budget's approximately one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the staff that run this program, that is salary and benefits, so the net to the county is some seven hundred thousand dollars in savings. One of the things that we discovered along the path is there have been some unintended consequences that have proved to be beneficial to the county. Three times in the last twelve months, we've had our females inmates in capacity. The sheriff has called and requested that we review all the female inmates to see if any of them will be eligible for CSRP bond. On each occasion, we have been able to get out anywhere from three to six to help reduce their female population. Another benefit of this is sometimes you'll have non-assultive offenders who can't pay bond, and they will have medical issues. We can write a bond, that person can get out, and the county is then out of the medical expenses. This also frees up security that should the sheriff decide to have security act at the hospital while the person is in the hospital. One of the, there's three ways that this can be done. I think that many of y'all are aware, there are the recent lawsuits filed, probably the most, what's the word I want to use? I want to say infamous, but I don't think that's correct. The biggest one is probably in Harris County, where the federal judge there ordered to release some people from the jail. Harris County did in fact appeal to the Fifth Circuit, and about a month ago, the panel rejected Harris County's appeal and returned it to the federal district judge in Houston, I believe it was Judge Rosenthal. And so now, basically, the county is going to have to abide by the judge's order, court's order, unless they choose to go farther. In addition to that, about four, three months ago, just so happens Terry and I were in Galveston attending a Texas Probation Association conference, there was also a judicial conference going on. State judges from all across the state were in Galveston, but they weren't there in the conferences. The ACLU filed a lawsuit against Galveston County while the judges were there. Timing is everything. Makes for great (inaudible). I think with the interest that was seen in the last legislative session on bail bond reform, I do not think it's going to go away. I think you're going to see additional statutory language come up again in the nineteenth session. I do not think the ACLU is going to go away on this. I think they're looking for counties that they don't consider having a progressive bond program. I have received calls, not only from Terry, I will say he was the first person to call me, but from about four or five other probation directors wanting to know about this program. I don't know if I'm getting ready to like road show or not, Erie County, but it's certainly possible. I would be willing to answer any questions I can for y'all. I try to anticipate the things that you would like me to talk about, but.
Would you kind of just walk us through, just going through, just pick a person, fictitious name?
Sure, absolutely.
Walk them through the whole process and let them know what it is.
My fictitious person's name is Terry Easterling.[559.04][559.04](laughter)
Well-known criminal.
(inaudible).
A reverbate of unmissable, you know, regard. Anyway, what would happen is the person gets arrested, Terry's arrested. By internal policy, we do not write CSRP bond on assaultive or anything over ten thousand dollars unless ordered to do so by the court. They're having cases, especially when we were reviewing the female cases in Taylor County, the judges raised that limit to fifty thousand, and they would look at some second and first degree felonies, but those were staff. As I've mentioned earlier, there are three people, so what happens is the inmate gets in, the bond's been set by the magistrate, there is a green form that is the CSRP application form. I passed all our forms of documentation on to Terry to give him a little heads up on this. That inmate then fills out that form, on every morning, approximately nine AM, those things are sent to us. The CSRP staff then start reviewing them to make sure they are complete. They will go and do an initial staffing with the judge. The judge will determine which ones they're interested in, it's being released. We will then verify all that information on there, residence, employment. In addition, we ask for three references, who would know where this person is going to be at all times. We will talk to those three people. Once all that information is compiled and verified, we then go back to the judge, this is what we have, Judge. We verified that Terry's wife Sharon is willing to take him in, he has a job today. And we've talked to three references who said his name pretty much known very well and they know where he'll be. The judge at that point in time will look at the offense he's charged with, determine if they need any special conditions of bond they want on there, and if so, who's going to pay for those? In the case of Indigent, the county does give us a small amount of money to use for like eight thousand dollars a year, it's not a big amount, and that's like for GPS or alcohol monitoring or UAs like that. Now, that is only for brand-new felony or misdemeanor cases. If the person is on a motion to revoke probation, then that is, the cost will be added to the individual's probation fees, and the probation department collects that individually separately. So we do separate the two, that's why you'll see the difference there on your chart showing MTRs and straight pre-trial cases. Once the judge then makes that determination, what the person's going to be bonded, we then execute the bond order, go down and get the person out, we interview them in the jail, tell them when to report to the probation office and what their bond conditions are. If they refuse any bond conditions, the person does not get out of jail, we go back and tell the judge.
And what's a typical lens of what are bond conditions, what might that be in that scenario?
Oh, it could be, like I said, GPS monitoring, it could be wearing an alcohol monitoring device, it could be weekly UAs, it could be reporting to the CSRP officer once every seven days, once every fourteen days, once a month, it could be just any number of things, depending upon what the judge is interested in. A lot of times in the DWIs, you will see a lot of additional alcohol-related monitoring put on those folks, especially felony DWIs, so it just really depends on what the judge is, what the judge wants to do. This is entirely different from a straight bond from a bondsman does, because we obviously are very involved, we're monitoring those conditions. If those conditions get violated, we report that immediately back to the court, and we tell the judge what the violation is, what the information we have to substantiate that allegation. The judge then can do one of the couple of things, they can obviously do nothing, leave the bond as is, they can declare the bond insufficient, make a greater amount, or they can revoke the bond if the person gets returned to jail.
What's the failure rate in this program?
It's surprisingly high, we'll have about twenty percent that don't really comply. Generally speaking, though, and when I define failure, someone who is returned to jail and off of our program, and we don't write another CSRP bond. We have come around, and in other occasions, and the court has ordered us after a matter of time, to write a second CSRP bond on someone who hasn't complied. Obviously, those conditions will be a lot tougher. That's commission when you see the judge orders someone to report weekly to us in person, if there has been a bond failure in the past, but it's been surprisingly high. There's a three percent charge that the defendant pays, that money goes to the county. I'd like to tell you we collect millions and millions, no we don't, because three percent does not have to be paid upfront for the individual to get out of jail. They are basically put on a payment plan to pay the three percent.
So what's the amount of your staff that (inaudible)?
Well, the county pays for three, okay? But because of the probation infrastructure, and Terry and I have similar operations, and then we both had court units, the court unit officers also are involved in the monitoring of these bond conditions, with this very close coordination. So in my case, there's eight officers that are actually working bond cases, three directly, five that are permanently. That's what I say, when you utilize the CSCD, you get the benefits of the infrastructure that we have in place, not only do you get the additional probation officers, their supervisory clerical staff, they're already paid for by the CSCD, the county's not incurring a cost. So the infrastructure that we bring to the table makes us very advantageous.
So what have been glaring comments of this program, just to pretty much (inaudible). Appreciate that.
The biggest one is I'm not on any bail bondsman's Christmas card list.[923.12][923.12](laughter)
Mr. Grayson, how well will this program work for Potter County?
Commissioner, we've had a similar program about twenty-five or thirty years ago, I believe it was effective. My predecessor started that when he was able to get a federal grant. When that grant ran out, the county chose not to continue or to pick up the funding, so the program died. But, you know, my staff, I have been having them look for the last thirty to forty-five days at people coming into the jail, and just a cursory look, it looked like there were about a half a dozen people a day that we would look at to be considered eligible for the bond program. And, you know, as you know, with cooperation with the sheriff's department, which is critical, I'm sure in Taylor County.
Absolutely.
And with us, you know, one of the disadvantages we would have is the relocation of the jail, so we would try to use the video stuff as much as possible, you know, with working with the sheriff's department. But yeah, I think it would definitely be a program that could be very cost-effective to the county. And Mike and I were talking about counties that are going to get sued, you know, by the ACLU and other organizations. We're both of the opinion, knowing a lot of their lobbyists and things, they're going to be going after low-hanging fruit. You know, the fact that a county has a program like this in place, I think is going to make it a much less likely target for lawsuits. And I do, I do agree with Mike in that, I don't know, if you wait a year or two on this, it may not be the county's option. It very well could be the legislature coming in and mandating, so, you know, my opinion would be that I think the cost savings are there for the county, and it might be better to get ahead of this problem and then wait for it to be done.
There are a couple of other things, you know, y'all might remember the last legislative session, there was a lot to do with mental health, defendants in custody awaiting bond, and how much quicker they have to be dealt with while they're in custody. While this is not a twenty-four-seven operation, I want to be really clear about that, it really is not. If someone gets arrested at five-thirty on a Friday, the earliest they're going to get reviewed is about nine-thirty on Monday morning, but that's better than, in some cases, thirty, forty, fifty days to hold the county and raise the money for bond. And I think, one of the county commissioners in my county called me about this right after Galveston County got the suit filed against them, and he asked me exactly what, Terry, how do you think this, you know, positions us? And I reminded him I am not licensed to practice law in this state or any other for that matter. And my personal opinion is, we are way ahead of the game, we have a program in place, it's very, it has a great success, we can show that. And if we ever had to go to a twenty-four-seven operation, it would be much easier for us to do, considering where we are, versus trying to implement one from ground zero. So we feel very, we're very comfortable where we are, we think this works really well. There are some schedule requirements that the Commissioner's Court would have to go through in order to set this up, I think that's in chapter seventeen of the protocol procedure, we refer to the county attorney on that, but it's pretty easy to do, takes a vote, and you're off and running. A vote with some money.
So that leads me to a couple of my questions. So operationally, help me understand kind of what, I recognize the presentation, and you have the Taylor County kind of lens that you're speaking to.
Yes, ma'am.
What does this look like for Potter County? Is the ask to say, you're upcoming your budget session, and so you need a plan for three to X positions, Terry, that would follow through your department, like, help me understand operationally, outside of the presentation, what that looks like fiscally? Try to get my hands around that versus the cost savings and some other questions there.
Commissioner, we currently have a position funded through the county. This would be just simply the same type mechanism. You would fund three positions if you chose to do so.
Three net new.
Three net new, yes. And, you know, people have been asking throughout this process, what's in effect of the CSCD? You know, why would you guys, people want to do this? Well, you know, a couple of reasons. One, I've been a Potter County guy practically my whole life, you know, forty years, and I believe in the county, and I believe in us working together, and I think that this is a good program. But secondly, about six years ago, I was looking at our numbers, we had about thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred people on probation, elements of misdemeanor. Today, we're down below twenty-eight hundred. You know, my, my thought is, if we can get people out of jail earlier, they are going to be less likely to take county time to serve their sins, and they're going to be less likely to take state jail felony time to serve their sins, and will be more inclined to go on to probation, because they know they're going to be serving all of those or, you know, more of that misdemeanor time or state jail felony time than they would, because they're not getting jail credit while they're sitting in jail. And I think that would be an unintended consequence, but would also be a tremendous benefit to the county and to the CSCD, because, you know, we can't help offenders change their behavior that leads to the criminal activity if they're sitting in jail, and that's our, that's our mission.
And the quicker we get them out, the more money we save.
Right, and I think, you know, the better chance we have of turning monitoring.
So Terry, I think I've been a commissioner and thinking outside the box, it's something I always wrestle with during budget session, since this is something we've done twenty, twenty-five years ago, what practice on now? What spirit embedded outside of, let's do the right thing, right?
I think the lawsuits being filed across Texas has brought it to the forefront, it certainly brought it to the district judges, my boss's intentions, and I believe Judge, what was that, Judge Tanner, two months ago, Judge Ward, asked for a meeting involving the sheriff's department, various counties.
Yeah, we had about forty-five people there.
Yeah. To discuss the feasibility of taking a similar program and putting it in Potter County, and I do think, you know, that we came to the conclusion that it was something that could be worked. I would also add that, as, as was mentioned earlier, it is entirely feasible, if not this session, and the next one, legislature needs to skirt the thing up, as they do every two years, this may not be a choice. The legislative emphasis right now seems to be more and more coagulating around, we need to reform bail bond, and ultimately, that reform is more and more looking like doing away with surety bonds.
Do you have any problems with the judges here in county that were not readily looking forward for this program?
I've been told that no, under uncertain circumstances, if I ever try to do away with this, I'll be unemployed. My judges, my district judges and my county court law judges, and I have five total, really, really like this program. And one of the benefits to this is that if the person is under bond for any amount of time under our supervision, when their plea deal is being struck, and the judge has considered that plea deal, they can ask the CSRP officer or the court officer, how did this person do under bond, did they comply with all the conditions? If they did, that obviously helps make the decision. If they didn't, then the judgment will be thinking, or the district attorney officer will be thinking. I do think this gentleman is correct, though, about the legislative session. The only reason you didn't see a lot of bail bond reform in twenty-seventeen is the bail bond was lobbying, they were able to kill a lot of it. But there is, with this lawsuit out of Harris County and the emphasis going forward, I do think you're going to see legislation mandating counties enact it sometime. And, you know, with legislation, when they, when sunny day has been in May, they made everything effective that followed in September, three months is not a lot of time operationally to get something like this off the ground.
I do. Just for the public's information, there are certain classes of crime that would not be eligible for this, is that correct?
Absolutely. Under our policy, we do not write one that's not, we don't write bond on anyone that's assaultive, a sex offender, or anyone like that, unless ordered to do so by the court. We don't write bond with more than ten thousand dollars unless ordered to do so by the court. And there are some circumstances where the court will actually order us to do a bond on someone who doesn't meet our internal policy. That's the court's decision. I will also tell you that, like I said earlier, when we reviewed the females, there were some females that we bonded out that did not meet our internal policy, but the court wanted them released.
That failed that category, that the friend who was (inaudible).
Because, you know, that's where most of our failures came from. I will tell you that our screening process, I have a lot of confidence in our screening process, you know, we take it pretty seriously. We, we take, there's nothing that I can do to describe the relationship that the CSCD has with the, with the judges. And we want to pass along the best possible information we can. Terry's been my friend for fourteen years, and I can assure you he's the exact same way. If we give bad information to the court, and, you know, decisions made that are not of best interest, it falls on us. So we do our very best screening, it's nice to give the very best information possible. There is a degree of certainty.
Commissioner, I think, you know, if you've got a female inmate that's eight and a half plus pregnant, and she's sitting there on her twenty thousand dollar bond, the judge is probably going to say, yeah, I know what your policy is, write the bond.
Actually, they don't even say, I know what your policy is.[1571.12][1571.12](laughter) It's great to write the bond.
So you feel pretty confident, your screening process that has been very well vetted for years and.
Eighteen.
Eighteen years.
Yes.
Those that would fall in category of (inaudible) police don't follow through cracks.
Yes, sir, I feel very confident about it. You know, I will tell you one of the reasons that the bail bondsman, I'm not on the Christmas card list, very simply is because they say we charity them. We don't charity them, okay? The people have made application to us, so that means more likely they weren't able to make the bond, the ten percent of the bonds that were earned. So, you know, some of the people that you're looking at, this is what the ACLU is centered in on, if you read the lawsuits that have been filed, and do not think the court people should be held in jail because they can't make bond, this is something that allows the economically challenged to make a bond and get back out and start taking care of their family. So there are lots and lots of upsides, the downside is, like I said, I'm on the Christmas card list.
You know, and Commissioner, to speak to your other concern, you know, Mike's program has been running for eighteen years. We have programs in Potter County that we've been running a long time that, you know, Mike's having to look at. You know, what, the difference is, it's the culture of the county, you know? Yes, there will be some uproar, there'll be some change, you know, changes, you know, can be viewed as traumatic for people, that lasts about six months, and then you develop a new normal, and you go on, it becomes part of your culture, you know, as to what you do. And I think that, you know, within a year of implementing this program, you know, whether we're having new judges come on the bench, they're, they're going to know nothing about this program, you know? And as, as people come on, and, you know, people go out, it becomes part of your culture.
So the, you indicated that (inaudible) pushback in the (inaudible) bail bond.
I wouldn't get that much anymore. Once a year, at the county bail bond hearing, board hearing, you know, there'll be one bail bondsman in particular who, you know, trash talks us a little bit, and nothing ever happens, we go right along, so.
So other than that, that entity, you know, you're not getting (inaudible).
Obviously, the sheriff's department likes this program, for the reasons I indicated, it helps control, it helps manage the inmate population, we're able to help them in overcapacity situations, we're able to help them when there's medical issues, you know, pregnancy, someone, you know, comes in and all of a sudden they need emergency surgery or something. There are many, many different ways this can be utilized. Law enforcement, police departments that we, that we work with in our jurisdiction, they will call and ask us if someone's on bond, they'll, they'll verify residential information, employment information, what their conditions are, they will tell us if the person is, if something new has gone on, we then share that information with the court. So there's, the communication that we currently have, and I know he has, exists, and it's just, it's just raw, the way it works.
So Judge, what kind of, and I wasn't invited to this twenty-person meeting, this is all new context for me, so I apologize for some of my questions, but what is the action you're looking for, the court today? Is it formal or a general nod as we, as we prepare for budget? I'm trying to kind of understand potential next steps.
I truly think we need to implement this as quickly as we can. We talked about that in the meeting, I think everybody was on the same, same page right here. But I do remember specifically saying that Mr. Canales, we take over that one, that job, you know, to. But I do remember specifically saying that Mr. Canales would take over that one, that, that job, you know, two more people besides you, a person like him.
Well, if we're going to continue with the mental health document, I'll need an officer to do that. And then we were looking at three people to do this, and then we can do, we can pick up the rest with, uh, my court officer. You know, it's one of those things when, they're all going to be part of a team, you know, so.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be just, okay, so it wouldn't be like hiring two, three people? We've got the people, right, or you're just going to?
No, we're, we would be hiring, if we hire, three new people to do bonds, is what we would be looking at. You're going to need somebody to go out, you know, and, and as I said, one of the, uh, idiosyncrasies of Potter County is the location of the jail, which can be, you know, problematic. And, you know, by the time you get out there and get back, you've been there half a day, you know, if you're taking care of, you know, have to go out there and take care of some business. So, you know, what we would also try to use video arrangements, whatever. If, if you wanted to find two positions, one good position, we'll do what we can do with what we got.
And why don't you put stuff at the jail, like in the new admin space?
Well...
Yeah, because I'm not moving the jail.
I understand, and I'm not asking you if that'd be jail. Yeah, I'm ju, I'm just saying, that may be something we look at.
Not a new jail.
Yeah.
Not a new jail.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
This would help, I think, you know, keep you from having to, to do that in some ways. That would be one of the, the side benefits. But we're going to do this, whatever's the most economic. I, you know, once again, the use of the video, uh, equipment that we have that we can be, you know, the sheriff's office has already expressed, you know, their willingness to cooperate with this, that would be helpful, you know? We, now we can send documents back and forth, you know, electronically, that would help, be helpful to us, so.
Terry, have you, uh, researched any grant programs to get these things coming?
There's nothing currently, uh, available that I'm aware of, certainly I'm aware of. You know, certainly, uh, no state money and no federal money. Uh, and, and, you know, generally, when the legislature orders you to do something, they don't give you a big pot of money to do it. They're called unfunded mandates for a reason, you know, uh, so.
So help me understand the, uh, the three person, uh, that would be dedicated to the bonds. Oh, oh, actually, both individuals, that would be, uh, like booting around, that would be actually, uh, in the field of?
I did how I do it, okay? By the way, first, my jail is three miles from my office. And one reason that I have elected not to house the CSRP officers at the jail is because I've got them right across the street to the judges too. And so logistically, it's much better that they're housed with me close to the judges as opposed to at the jail. I only need to not at the jail interview that inmate. I've got way more information going to the courts between these than I do interviewing inmates. Uh, and once you get this process really flowing, rolling, you're not overwhelmed. It, it really becomes maintenance and supervising those cases. Your interviews, you know, initially, you're going to have a, quite a bit because it's new, it's a way to get out of jail, about, about, I don't know what your jail capacity is. But anyone who can't make a bond initially, he is going to get a rush of applications. Once that smooths out, it really becomes routine, like you said, changing the culture. You'll get a normal amount, you'll know how to manage that, and then supervise those cases, staffing with the judges. Um, I forgot if you asked something else, I apologize.
Well, you did answer it.
You're not aware.
Just kind of, uh, have those individuals, dedicated individuals, actually, after everybody, uh...
Right, well, one thing's now, when we don't put a new officer on bond, we put experienced officers on bond. Um, I'm a little funny because of all the interactions they have with my bosses. I don't, I don't want to nitty up there, okay? I want the best possible person I have to have is interacting with my bosses as much as possible. So I have very experienced court officers. And, and my officers, in my department, that is considered, uh, almost like a promotion to go to CSRP because of the interactions you have with the courts. It, it is, it's one of the better positions to have as opposed to a regular test level.
You know, and I think, I'm, you know, one reason for three commissioners, you know, uh, you've got to have somebody in the office seeing offenders, getting, taking phone calls, you know, taking care of the, the documentation. And you've got people going to the courts, you've got people going to the jail, you know, so, you know, if you've only got two, you know, sometimes you only got one, you know, and, and it would be really difficult, I think. Now, we can, uh, like I said, CJ, my oversight agency, has a hard and fast rule that is not more than ten percent of one employee's, uh, can be spent towards county business unless, uh, it is being supported financially by the county, you know?
Regardless of size of your department, that's one employee. If you're here in San, one employee.
If you're Potter County, one employee. Dev Smith, one employee, ten percent of one employee's time. Which is pretty draconian, and, and we've not liked it, but that's the way it is. And that's one reason why we basically stopped writing PTR bonds to the courts. When the judge would call me and say, Terry, can I do a PTR bond? I'd say, well, Judge, if this is the one you want for two thousand and eighteen, yeah, I can do it, you know, but that was about it. Now, if they, with the county funding those positions, that opens the door for me. Nobody's going to, you know, CJ is not going to come in and say, well, you know, I, I noticed it looks to me like you're spending more time of state employee time working on county stuff, that, they're not, they're not capable of doing that. So, you know, there is some, you know, uh, support that the CSCB would be able to give to this program. But I do think, yeah, at least two positions with the one that's currently being funded would be, would be necessary.
So what does that look like budget-wise? I, I mean, it seems very odd that we would be looking at two to potentially three net new at the end of this budget cycle, prepping for the next. Um, part of me thinks, I want to get that off the ground and then look at, looking at the upcoming budget.
Commissioner, it would take us, uh, till the first of October to get this program up and running. If you said, yeah, give us the thumbs up, you know, next week. So, you know, we have to hire, uh, we have to reorganize, we have to create forms, uh, you know, or, or copy forms, uh, you know?
That's why you went to jail first time.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, plagiarists. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, it, it'll take us a while to get the, the program into work with the judges. But, but Mike is right. I, I think, you know, we've worked real hard in my tenure to, uh, make sure that our relationship with the courts is good. I think the judges trust us. And if we go in there and say, you know, we think this is a, a suitable case, I think we're going to get support from the courts. I just, I really do.
Here's the bottom line. Either we do this or we get sued. So I think we need to do it. I mean, that's it.
Terry, can I have your input this, including the budget? What are, what are things or concerns or anything you're stewing over?
Well, we, we did cover the present today, included this weekly October first, so you will find in your budget book that I made today on page one twenty-four and yesterday, mentioned for this program, the total was two hundred and five thousand, so.
Two hundred and five thousand? And that's for the, just salary positions, right?
That's the salary positions and then the contract service, uh, some training money, um, some audits, yes. I would say it's all. But, but if you look at the other side of that, think about, like, where to stay if I get out of jail.
Our net, the last twelve months was about seven hundred thousand, and I believe our cost per day is less than yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. If I don't respond, Santa Fe building space allocation, if it's suitable approval or recommendation, uh, all three departments, space allocation, Santa Fe building. Um, so, you want to speak up here, Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You want to speak here in a few moments? Uh, we had gathered this, the direction of the court, go through and look at some of these, uh, spaces within the Santa Fe building. We do have, y'all have a drawing of the French, correct, in front of you? Uh, I'm not going to go through everything. If you please go to the second floor. I'm just going to tell you the changes that was made and indicate which ones they are. On the bottom left side here, you'll see a look area. This right here is the, uh, new county attorney, uh, area that will be utilized, and they already have utilized part of it. Scott had actually reduced the amount of space that he's using over there. So this, these four offices right here, what they're requesting. The regional public defender right there, we have two hundred and seventy-three square feet. They were originally on the fourth floor, uh, northeast corner of the building. They will be moving down here. One of the main reasons to put them down there is they don't have to go beyond a, uh, main hallway door into a secondary area. They have quick access from the ground that will run directly up there to second floor. The, uh, next change will be on the fourth floor. The, uh, top left area up there, we see the sixteen hundred two square feet. That is where the sheriff's department currently is right now, plus the two hundred and four square feet right below that one small office. Uh, we are moving them to the upper portion of the building. So basically, right now, for, uh, the treasurer being, everything indicated in, uh, the yellow right there is the area that we're requesting that should be given there. The, uh, yes.
Yellow all the way around there, which, the whole east side of that.
Yes, sir. How we say, the, uh, the basketball minority C graduate has six hundred and two square feet. That right there basically, uh, is, was identified as being a temporary space. But, uh, she's going to need to set up some of her equipment in there, break rooms, stuff like that, because they do not have that where they're, uh, going in these other two offices right here. But everything right there on the east side of the building would be for treasurer. The next one is the, uh, seventh floor, uh, human resource. Uh, basically, everything on the left side of your page right here, we have expanded. Further down, they have picked up, uh, three additional offices through there. And the final change would be up on the twelfth floor. Uh, you have long course of current April rose level of the building. Uh, everything indicated right here and color would be for the sheriff's department up there. Uh, you told, did you guys like saying anything about anything?
One of the things, uh, I think that, look, the rule that comes out of this is, uh, uh, HR, correct? And private guys, possibly pay them for, uh, privacy and the like, uh, so that they can have, is that the impression?
Yes, sir. Terry, are you comfortable with what we presume to you?
We, it's our lead, well.
The rule is that, yeah, certainly, on the seventh floor, the left side of your page, I'm sure.
So Michael, will you help me understand kind of at a high level, um, the total square footage that these departments have combined versus what they're moving to? You know, if it's two thousand and they're expanding to five, you know, I'm just making up numbers to kind of...
I'd have to run the numbers.
Okay, I just didn't know.
The fourth floor for a treasurer, most definitely, uh, they had just, I believe, maybe two or three on the seventh floor originally. But these offices that's right there, they're going to, are a little bit smaller than where they're coming from.
Mm-hmm. And that's what, um, we have three rooms plus a storage room on the seventh floor. We're moving to this wing is because the, the spaces are much smaller. It's longer, but the room space is, is much smaller. So, um, I'm looking in the storage room. So one of those offices would be storage. I mean, they all have a purpose now that we're moving in. And also losing our, uh, conference areas, Michael, Richard, Mike. And, uh, he's Michael, I mean. Um, so, very for us to, for us to, the space that they utilize.
So why would you want to go with, with smaller spaces, or, why, why would you want to have them moved?
It's not that I want to have to move, but I'm willing to do that. It's, it's all the situation.
Okay.
So, and glad to be a part. Because my budget is so small, I will have to ask you guys to work with me through this as well. So, um, just kind of beginning it, but, um, we're excited to do this. I'm glad for, I think it's going to work out well for all of us, including the sheriff's office. And I've been scrounging around, I'm looking to sheriff for being, for being interested, helping me find some supplies and different things. My, they've all been great, so.
So this over, uh, uh, the east side, the fourth floor, which is where it's, that's basically all for storage. It's just one large open room. When we purchased the Santa Fe building, the, uh, floors nine and ten, Santa Fe go to them, we basically use these floors as a reasonable way down, and there, it's just a lot of space. Uh, knowing that the court approves this today, uh, our department will be the one coordinating with the IT department, uh, purchasing of that new BMO. Uh, the move, though, cannot happen until after August the sixteenth. The over the edge event that we're having in the building, the twelfth floor, that entire east side up there is a staging area for the...
Is that where you're going to prepare a phone, no, Ian?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is one thing you have?
Yeah.
I didn't think that.
Yeah, I didn't think that.
Yeah, I didn't think that.
Trying to be, 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 be.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. Okay, so I have the motion on this one. I make a motion that we approve the recommendation for multiple departments staying in the Santa Fe building for space allocation, primary purpose for the HR department security.
Sure.
I have a motion, I'm starting on the face of Rachel right now. Um, thank you so much, your value. Number six tiers two, to consider an actual open floor position, to access to that investment zone two.
So you have backup in your agenda. This is a letter from Judge Sermon, who was recently an appointee for one of our seats, uh, in her new position. She is going to step down. So I mentioned this the last quarter. Um, we have written the agenda item. If anyone of you have recommendations and you're ready to proceed forward with the recommendation, but we do have an open seat for tiers two, which is the hundred million dollar, uh, potential development in East Amarillo. This is really going to compare any of those candidates in game action, or if we need to put this on the next agenda, so you can kind of think about it either way, certainly.
I, I, you had someone, I think, that, uh, previous, uh, agent, did you not, I thought you had, had?
Do you have one?
Okay, sure.
Do you have a question?
I can get one, maybe one. But I serve as chairwoman, so I mean, I, uh, I potentially am not trying to put a potential candidate out there.
I just pass it, basically, and I'll serve it right up.
Absolutely, okay, that is awesome.
Okay.
All right, understood. And Potter County extension to your, uh, thank you for Potter County extension office. Thank you for that.
Thank you for coming in. I'm just going to talk about it actually, not all of the other. Okay. Um, just kind of giving update about our summer, sometimes I was really busy for the attic area. Um, so some of the things we've been doing are the fragmatocainer training, which is, um, what folks need to spray or recite pesticides, uh, producers and, and business owners and things that we get about, we're getting about the Texas Department of Agriculture. So we host a training and they do a test, and so we've been helping those. Um, we've also been, uh, taking care of a pretty neat project with the tri-state fairgrounds. We have what we call our square foot gardens project. And so five county families, we've opened it up to the county employees. Um, the master gardeners and I have been working with them all summer to teach them gardening and, and I think their produce. And, um, at the end of the summer, they're, uh, able to enter some of their produce into the tri-state fair, if they wish to do so. That's been a new project. Um, also participating or running a sorghum trial for area producers. We've got lots of different varieties of sorghum planted out at a farmer's place in Bushland. And we will be doing a field day, and once that crop is produced, we'll be able to teach farmers in the area about different varieties that work well here. Um, and we're even, uh, planning to bring in a home economics site and cook sorghum for them because many producers have never eaten what they produce, so it'll be a new subject. Um, another large focus for the whole region is that, even though we've gotten some rain, we're still in the drought. Many people don't think we are, but we are in a terrible drought. So, um, lots of information and training has been brought in and into us to extend to our community members about, uh, mitigation, uh, projects and things they can do with their livestock and crops. Uh, drought is a very difficult time for ag producers. It, it runs our... Drought is a very difficult time for ag producers. It runs our economy, so it's something I think we all need to stay abreast of and be supportive of. July nineteenth, I will be hosting a well owners training. There's some folks coming up from AAM that will be teaching people that have a water well, that own a water well, how to know more about their well, how to maintain it, how to know their depths. If you're able to bring in a water sample, and we'll sample it for them, because naturally, in this region, there can be arsenic and other chemicals in the water we drink. And many farmers and ranchers have critters who also then reach into water wells sometimes. So it's a good opportunity, it'll be a great thing, or ten dollars actually, if you have a loss tested. One of the newest projects that I've been working on is that our four H recruitment event is coming up in early August. And we talked in the office about offering vet science program again for our youth. So I will be leading that program, as I mentioned when I was here last, as an effort to kind of help guide the two universities that may potentially open vet schools. But nonetheless, it will give the kids a good skill, and I think perhaps some are interested. I'm also working with Trinity College to hopefully get them a college certificate of course, once they complete our program. So, our trainers, that actually comes to fruition. So in that effort, I'm a true believer, if you don't hold a credential in teaching, you need to hold a credential site for teaching. So I've found a local vet, Swan Animal Clinic, who's allowed me to come in and do some observation. In order to get a vet tech license, you have to have five hundred hours of clinical. So I've been volunteering in that clinic a little bit, and they've been wonderful. And are open arms to any of our four H kids that want to come in in the future, so I look forward to that, that growing. And the last thing I've been doing is the Emerald Community Market has invited us to participate every weekend in their event. They were really learning to have an educational piece to their, these little markets. So I've been on Saturdays, teaching about water conservation, trying to, and we're gonna give a water barrel away at the end. And we may roll that into a new program that Extension has called Pathic Late, to help people learn about where their food comes from and try new things. So it may be an office community project that we maybe get around Saturdays.
Have you got much interest in any of the, 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 the?
Really, they have, and I've been very, very, very surprised to have lots of people interested and knowledgeable about the fact that we need to, about what, you know, leave it. You have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number eight, installation of the water well, to consider for approval, send them to the Potter County Santa Santa Christian Academy baseball stadium lease, allowing DC to install a water well at DC's things, for the church and the altar.
Mike, I have to just give you kudos and shout out upon whatever, what you've done to that stadium, who wants to force it.
I was hoping I could be first after Pastor Sheldon's prayer. Nobody can be in a bad mood after that.
I forget, that's true, that's very true.
I give you just abbreviated report on what we want to do. I don't know every rule there is about a well, but basically, when you want to drill a well, you turn that into the district that controls it and make approval. This is not a drinking water, it's not potable water, it's only irrigation water. So I think that relaxes the rules a little bit, that you're not going to be drinking the water. The well will be inside stadium, down the, down the left field line, there's a set of leachers. And then for most leachers going north toward Grand, like third street, it will be in that area. It's already staked out. Everything has been approved from the conservation district. The only thing that they're requesting is, since we're not the owner of the property, that we have a letter that you have granted us permission to drill the well. Well will be about two hundred and eighty foot deep. If it turns out more or less than that, that will be reported to Water District. They, they monitor, they know every well that's drilled, and they keep account of, they just want that. And that's part of the rules, that you, you can't drill so many wells close to get them. So once you give them a location, then they do their research and determine whether or not it's, it's legal, and this one is. So everything is in order, as far as that goes, other than just permission of Potter County.
Okay, did you?
Any questions?
Did you write this, sir?
I did, if you like it.
Good job.
One of the things on that, the agreement, and I understand the commission has asked us if we're not leasing the property to bear the expense of closing the well. And I understand they don't have a problem with that. I would ask you to use discretion, because if we do flee, or we get the boot, or whatever, I don't see that happening. That is a major piece to help you lease this thing again. Probably as much as anything that we've ever done, to have that well, be able to take care of that grass without paying for the water, just paying for the electric, it's very attractive. And if our lease is up, or whatever, and you say, we both hug and kiss and say goodbye, I wouldn't want to close that right away, why would you guys? I really wouldn't, but that's, that's very, that's, this, this may be one of the best improvements we've made, that we've made a lot. I would invite you out, look, I'd be pleased to give the commissions for, or individuals a kind of glance at what we've done, so. And this is a major key for us, for our performance.
And I did touch base with Mike to understand kind of the process and the preliminary work prior to coming to the court about the site plans around the well, and what that looked like, and make sure all the balances were in place. And correct me if I'm wrong, this is roughly a fourteen thousand dollar expense for?
Yes, yes, yes. That, that could be a little more, if they have to go a little deeper. There's a proposed depth, it could be a little less if they found the water that they needed less than two hundred and eighty. But that's, that is our estimated cost, and we know that it could vary a little bit.
And the primary purpose is to offset that water bill to irrigate the land.
The water will only be used to irrigate the field, will not be used for drinking water or for restaurants.
Any, any particular time that's good for you to come out, or group or individuals, is there, is there a better time?
You just let me know when you want me there. I think, I think if you, I've shown the judge some of the photographs of some of the things we've done. Rachel Merkia's been out, I bet she actually came to one of our games, and.
Together.
So, I, I think you'd be pleased with what we've done. It's almost ownership, we've got a year and a half ago, it's in the past, but.
I move that we, the court, approve the addition to the Potter County Saint Jacenta Christian Academy baseball stadium lease, allowing the DC to install a water well at DC's expense for irrigation of the water, to be.
I have a motion in a second, on the favor, Rachel.
Thank you. You send me a copy of that, so I can forward it to you. Thank you.
Okay, number nine, we're gonna pass that for a couple weeks, can't get correct.
To request a vacate portion of West San Francis Road, consider or approve a request at Potter County to vacate portions of West San Francis and Church Road.
But I said your name, not Malane, no, no.
I hear that it's a new area, okay, good hand that we have here. We can talk to Georgia, and Mr. James, and Dr. Chandler, and Larson. They are all agreed, let us fence it off, because it's become a baby dump out there. And the road is not fixed for long. And we really just like the old bridges, so we can quickly, and in literal terms, the original foundations, and people out there shooting, talking, I'm afraid I'm going to be hard.
I have, I've been out there in Houston. People have turned it into a program and brought it and created, and I believe Sebastian will probably, along with the county, is maintaining that for a while.
Commissioner, is this your increasing?
Yes.
Could you speak to this?
I too have been out there, and it is a non-maintained road. And it's, basically, as they have stated, it is kind of, becomes a battle. And so, I, as long as all the property owners have agreed, it looks like it is just the case, it's paperwork we have. I haven't seen a problem with vacating.
Well, that sounds pretty easy, doesn't it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I would move then that Commissioners Court approved the request to vacate portions of West San Francis and Church Road. That's outlined in our packet.
Second? I have a motion in second, on the favor, Rachel, right now.
May we stick the gates up as a today, or tomorrow, or?
Do you like me fun?
Just fine, just thank you, you're very welcome. Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's great.
I'm gonna let it be, from an item to consider, an item called from an item, the road waste department, the resignation applicant, Jean Delfield, a summer mower, like the Jean Montegue, nineteen, resignation examiner, Castillo, his maintenance test effective July five, twenty eighteen. And in the maintenance of facilities, the new hiring of Chiru, Chiru, Demisi, Demisi. As, because there we end, one, as a request for two to detail, effective July, July sixteen, twenty eighteen. I need a motion for this.
I move, I move we approve the employment out of this.
A motion in second, on favor, Rachel. Thank you very much. All right, time to call.
Regarding the demolition of the old Sheriff's Administration building, they are over there staging right now. They will actually touch the building today, the notification they sent in, so the actual demolition will really start knocking down, probably happen tomorrow. Starting this afternoon, I'll meet with Larry Ursick, we'll go through on the law enforcement center site and the exterior of the building. We still have full coverage list on that, so we'll be performing that today through tomorrow morning. And then also, we'll be doing the eleventh month inspection, the warranty period on the storage building out there, file any claims that need to be filed. One thing I need to make you aware of on the LAC project on the exterior of the building, the composite metal panels, when you look at the building out there, there's a dark bronze colored panels. These things have been gone on, taken off, probably three or four times, and still been rejected, this time by Western Builders. The contractor that they hired is out of Fort Worth, they're having a hard time getting them back. So after meetings with Western Builders last week, they more than likely will bring in a new contractor to come in and replace these. It is not a purpose on substantial completion or anything like that, but just make you aware, you drive up out there and the panels will still be important.
Those expenses, that gonna be?
That is on Western Builders. And our next court meeting, as far as projects, Nicholas will be here to present a project to y'all regarding Xcel Energy. They have finally, after about fifteen years, chose to come in and take the transformers out of the Santa Fe building to clean up and hire supply there on their expense, so they're paying for everything, so Nicholas will do a presentation to y'all next week.
All right, just a quick, we track back, is there any culpability on those contractors out of Fort Worth area?
Well, they work directly through Western Builders, I'll be surprised if they're still in the business.
Okay.
They just chose not to come.
All right, thank you, Mike. Number thirteen, is y'all report, we have five hundred and eighty-four people in our jail today. Nine of the girls are female, none of the girls are farmed out anywhere, they're all here. Eighty-two percent are felons, twelve percent are prisoners. Do we have any county insurance?
No, we do not.
No insurance, just like your session, and then that, agenda items for next time, here's to your appointment.
Is there anything else? We start the bar, and we're, so I don't know what we're saying.
We have a way back from Boston. Be there.
You won't be there.
So, yeah. Twenty-third, the duration is probably.
The twenty-fourth, we have the afternoon of the twenty-third, that Monday, so we normally do break, I don't know if this is still how it works, but we took a break after court, I think for an hour or something, came back after lunchtime, started that whole afternoon, and then all day.
Do you like having a scheduled term for each department?
Yes.
Yes.
And by the way, just, just so we'll, Georgia, would you please stand up? I want everyone to take a look at this, okay, she, come on up here.
Yeah, she, she was, I thought, named, the constable of the year, in the country of Texas. That's always cool, that was my command when I got appointed, and that was what I had mentioned during that interview, so that's my goal.
In fact, just another quote, I think, we definitely should be proud of our constables. They have come to a tremendous long way, and not only have infected this county, but throughout the state of Texas. And that's, that's a, that's a one I'd be able to return around.
They took Commissioner Manna on their beat, so.
So, with their patrol, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Nothing, we are.